Are we up? Right, good evening. Are we up? Right, good evening, members, and welcome to Ramsgate Town Council for the Planning and Infrastructure Committee on the 12th night. And welcome all of our residents who may be viewing this meeting, and a Happy New Year to all of you. So, without further ado, item one, apologies. Do we have any apologies?
We do. Councillor Green, Moore, Mackinson and Ora.
Thank you. Oh, lovely, okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest in relation to the items on the agenda? With that silence, I take the answer to that is no. Item three is minutes of the meeting of the 8th of December. And I wasn't here on that, on that meeting, so... Anne-Marie.
Could I say that I was here and I'm not down on the list as present?
Yes, we can address it.
Back in the main, there's amendments, so they won't be signed tonight, but you can apply in seconds.
Yeah.
With an amendment.
Yeah.
One amendment, I think the date of the next meeting is wrong. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay, yeah, it was for the... Yeah, because we moved it forward and...
If it's certain shelters, but if there's a present, that's an amendment, and then there's apologies.
Okay, do you hear that?
Well, I know it's just being two places at one time.
I was just testing to see if members...
We're just, yeah.
I'll make all those amendments, yes.
The deputy town clerk was just testing to see whether you would pay any attention.
Oh, definitely.
I think you were, because you're...
Can I, well, can we, hang on a moment, hang on a moment, hang on a moment, can we just do this through the chair, please?
I'll accept the attendance and amend the minutes accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't there, but I did send my apologies, they were late. Apologies.
Right, for those of you who were here, can we have... Councillor Knight?
I propose we accept those amendments.
I'll second that. So, just in favour of those amendments? Thank you. And can I have, unless anyone's got any issues relating to the minutes, and could I have a proposal in a second, please? Those, seconded, those. And all those in favour of the minutes? Thank you, that's carried, thank you. Right. Onto the main business. Item four is the Thannet Local Plan, and this is to receive a report from the town clerk and to agree the town council's response in respect of Thannet District Council's partial updates of the local plan. For those of you who haven't seen it, the town clerk says that there are two discussion papers, a development strategy and an employment need document, along with a number of evidence-based documents, which are the local housing needs update, retail and leisure study, sustainability appraisal scoping report, whatever one of those is, habitat regulations assessment scoping report. And the call for sites has also been reopened due to the lack of suitable sites previously put forward. This is for development. Thannet District Council is inviting views on these documents and other further evidence that is needed and hope to publish a draft plan in 2022, which will set out the detailed policies and proposals for the area up to 2040. There will be the opportunity to comment again before the draft plan is finalised. Comments should be submitted by 5pm on Friday the 4th of February 2022. And the neighbourhood plan group are aware of this work. And the recommendation is to agree the town council's response in respect of these reports. So, I, open to the floor. Tricia?
Can I suggest that we go away and have a look at some of the reports and send our suggestions through to the town clerk via a date that we have made that seems sensible to allow her to pull those together? Because I don't think most of us are in frame of mind to get our heads around what's going on. I was having a look at the sustainability appraisal earlier, which is two hundred and fifty pages. No, I don't think we're probably, most of us, in that...
Absolutely sensible idea, councillor. Absolutely sensible.
Fourth of February.
Fourth of February. So, it's not that long.
If we could give ourselves a week or two to have a look and come back to the town clerk, our comments would that be?
I would say within the next fortnight. Who would that?
Could I just ask, are we, because I will respond as a local resident as well, and probably as a chair of a community group, and probably as somebody who's concerned about the airport and the port. Are we looking at it from a perspective of our own town, so trying to focus in on, on basically the local plan as it, as it sits, as it is going to affect negatively or positively Ramsgate solely and wholly?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's what the town council's here for. Councillor Crittenden?
I was just wanting to check how long the town clerk, I don't know if she's not here to ask, but how long she would want or need to pull together the comments for the report and what had the latest statement been?
Well, that's why I was saying if we do it within the next fortnight, which would take us to the 19th, if we have the 19th of January.
I'm kind of looking for an end date in the next fortnight.
Yeah, well, to 19th of February, well, fortnight today, so... Councillor Nixey?
Can I just confirm, so if we're looking at, obviously, we're going to have to send things happening to the role, we're going to need to...
I think that's something that what I would do is ask, this is, if we agree this, obviously the town clerk's made aware of that, and then we'll get, we'll, I think it would be ideal if we can get a meet to formalise that.
And we could do that electronically, couldn't we?
We could do, we could do, yes, it's not necessary to make it, yes.
And just, I'd say this because one of the things that we wanted to do at the beginning of like a four-year term, the council, you know, you set up your business plan of what we'd like to achieve within four years. And I don't want us to have like a separate agenda to all those other groups that have an agenda, you know, like Casey C and TDC and so on and so forth. But if we do have this particular business plan, which is quite effectively backtracking and trying to write now, aren't we? Because we haven't actually had it in its physical state. We should then be referencing all the stuff that we're suggesting to where we think we should be going. At some point, we need a meeting and a practical application of, this is this, and it goes down that route, and that fits that route and so on and so forth. Because otherwise, looking at services, oh, we're all twenty-one now, oh, we're all really spaced out. We need a structure, don't we, really? But obviously, I'm not suggesting we do anything like that, and remember, that's what we've worked at and so on and so forth. But I think our meeting needs to have something more structured, and as Laura said, it's this business plan sort of, yeah, that was my, that was my thinking of having meetings and... So, I'm sort of doing stuff.
That makes absolute sense, and I'm... I was struggling to find that councillors have been having a lot of sense this evening, so... It's... Sorry, I'm, it's Christmas, it's Christmas. It's a Christmas hangover, it's a Christmas hangover. So, I think what, if members are in agreement with that, do you wish to propose that, Councillor Austin?
Yes, can I propose that we respond to the town clerk with our comments and suggestions within a fortnight? Councillor Nixey, can we ask, is there a framework we should be referring back to the meeting to look at now, or should we just be...
I think let's answer this.
Let's answer it and then...
Best our ability and answer it.
And then slot it in.
Exactly, and it's almost, we're using, you know, we're using this almost as a...
As part of the action, exactly.
And, okay, is there a second for that, Councillor Wynn? I will also, I will telephone the town clerk in the morning and know the issues with that, and then, and then we can take it through from there in the main summit with the town clerk for the meeting. So, we have a proposal in a second, that we respond, anyone to respond to the town clerk by the 19th of January. So, all those in favour, please show? That's carried, thank you. Right, item five is a proposed public right-of-way within Nethercourt. And if this is...
Can I talk to this member a minute, is it sent from Thursday night, if you don't know, so?
No, that's all right, yeah, I was just going to read out what's, what's on the agenda. To receive a written report from the town clerk regarding an alleyway in Nethercourt and consider whether this should be proposed to KCC for adoption as a public right-of-way. Nixey?
Yeah, thank you. So, right there, avenues that takes us out on the County Road West, which is whatever road it is, and frequented a lot by Nethercourt, it's said, because there's so few ways in and out of Nethercourt, it's very difficult to see that. And this is a pedestrian one. And we were notified by a residence that it was particularly overgrown, pre-Christmas, it's TDC responsibility, but... Art technicians sorted it, we asked you to do it, and it was like, oh, it's bad, it's a bit, yeah, I'm just... And then it's all quite classified, Laura said, this is a right-of-way, but can't agree, and I'm surprised, I thought it was because it has a street lamp, and that's normally a town hall, so anyway, so we've looked it for a bit of a check and it isn't. And so obviously, for it to be a right-of-way, allows us to get, plug up more TDC and so on and so forth, rather than this, like, no man's land. You get it on their radar, but like, it doesn't even come after. And I know that Deputy Town Clerk's about to tell you about the fence, that the garage on County Road East, which is on here.
He won't.
They have just repaired their fence along it, the ground fence, it looks very tidy. Art technicians did a thorough job with that, so basically, to get it officially stamped that it's a right-of-way, that we as a county could do that, I suppose, with this process.
Thank you, Councillor Nixey. Councillor Huxley?
Tidied it up.
But no, the town clerk, the town clerk, if you don't recall the Casey C, if you go on the county council website, it's going to be the road, sort of, where you can like, do road repairs and stuff, and street repairs. Well, if you know what I mean, I can't remember the apologies that I've put, that I've come to show you, but Laura suggested, the town clerk suggested that we need to do, you know, the next November, so, whether it is or it isn't.
Laura's, town clerk's report actually said this alley is not an official public right-of-way, so it's a case of do we want to put an application in for it to become a right-of-way to KCC?
So, it's sort of an old private area as well, so if it's not, then we'll check all of that out.
I'm just, sorry, hang on, just, I'm just surprised seeing that it looks tarmac'd, is it tarmac'd?
Yeah.
So, who's tarmac'd it? Someone's tarmac'd it.
Again, I think it's, they don't type of thing, because when we're talking, also, they've said it's got all of this. And I think it's just slipped on the radar instead of actually being officially...
Adopted, it's never been officially adopted, so it's probably maintained by KCC but not adopted.
So, that's what we're trying to do, to try and make it official.
I was a little shocked to read that there's a three-year backlog, so it's not going to happen very quickly. Is there not, under these circumstances, is there not a fast track for places that they thought they had, but we, but they, in turn, it turned out they did, but it's not a, you know, a footnote or some regulation somewhere that we can...
Well, I mean, my own, my own view is that maybe the faster way of doing it is to go through the Joint Transportation Board and to see whether or not that they will, that they will take, take that up. So, my own, my own view is we lose nothing by trying to get it adopted. And I think that we should go along with that, and also to ask the town clerk to see as to whether or not... KCC have been repairing it, have been, have done the tarmac. Is there a number, is there a number on the street light that's there, Anne-Marie, is there a number or...
Good point, I don't know, that's a good question.
So, if there's normally a number on it, you know, if it's a, because if the, the light goes out, then who repairs the light? So, there's all kinds of things there, so it's probably something very simple that they could just adopt the bloody thing, instead of it taking three or five years, whatever it is.
So... It's not like it's a new road, is it? You haven't got to create it, it's already there, but I think we need to do it because we need to cover our own liabilities, because it could be somebody trips on that alley, says it's RTC, when actually, we don't know who it is, but we definitely know it's not ours, and we're trying to do something about it.
So... So, three years plus due to backlog of work at KCC. Okay. Proposal front of floor?
Yeah, I propose that, you know, the town clerk to phone us and send a note, and we'll have it, regardless of being adopted as a private, public right-of-way.
Were you seconding, seconding, Councillor Crittenden?
I would love an official opening in... Twenty-seven. We could sit at ten, though, can't we?
For a vote on that, please, all in favour, please? That's, that's carried, thank you. Right, I want to get us some space. Can I just say, while we'll be talking about the work that our staff do, I wish to pass on, if you could just, a minute, please, David, that St Lawrence Church would like to thank Ramsgate Town Council and its staff for removing the horrible graffiti that was, that has been carried out on, on the walls around the cemetery, and also to some of the, some of the cemetery stones, and, and also to the door, the main door of the church. Yes, indeed, so anyway, but they wish to ask me to pass the thanks on, so... Right, item five, which is planning applications.
Six, three, four, just turning back.
I just said that, so just six, yes, I knew that, I knew that. I knew that. Right. Captain Camclerk?
First up, this is 20 to 24 Harbour Street, change of use of park ground floor for retail into a two-bedroom flat. Called in by councillors Ora Austin and Mackinson, only councillor Austin is here. Reason for calling, loss of retail space and mode of development. Councillor Green, who is unable to attend, has sent an email with reference to this. And his view is that in, to object to this in the strongest terms, the loss of ground floor retail in our core area is against the local plan strategic priority two and SPO eight and SP eleven. And he believes that on this occasion, you should exercise your right to speak at TDC planning and should ask you to see the town's accord and if you should officers be minded to approve.
Can I just say at this point that Councillor Crittenden has already called this in to Thannet District Council Planning Committee? I also dipped myself at Councillor Crittenden, beating into it. So, she was, she was hot off the press, as I say. Open up to anyone's comments?
Which one is it, which shop is it, I can't remember.
It's the old air centre. Air centre.
Oh, yes, 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 absolutely, yeah.
So, the one you'll be looking at is the ground floor at the back, where you've got the retail?
Yeah.
And the rest of it's going to be greyed out?
Yeah, yeah.
Change in that into a two-bedroom flat in the back.
Yeah.
Back to the stand side.
Councillor Austin?
Yeah, I'm just one of the people who called this in because not only does it lose crucial retail space, as Councillor Green has pointed out, but actually, that space is tinier. And the air centre first felt if I was one of their trustees, and I used to go in very regularly, it's really not an appropriate space at all for residential.
I think we pretty much agree with this, aren't we, Councillor Crittenden?
I think, having already called this in for TDC about the loss of ground floor retail space. I know, and I was reading that, one of the little debates on our glorious Facebook, only today, yesterday. The argument is that it's not the frontage that is a loss, it's at the rear. However, I still believe that by reducing the size of a retail space, even if it is only in the frontage, is still a long-term detriment at the ground floor, that will be task space, so I do still have considerable concerns about it. However, one of the things that I've been aware of in, in walking down Harbour Street and from that same discussion is it appears that quite a lot of the work in the conversion has already been done. And so I am also concerned about that when it comes to meeting.
Well, I mean, in itself, the work that they do is done entirely at their own risk. So, should it be, if they have converted that part of the ground floor into two-bedroom, is it? Two-bedroom flats, I haven't got my glasses, a big problem. Two-bedroom flat, then if it's refused, any forceful action can be taken to put it back into retail use. Councillor Wynn?
But, well, I said, I've been going through a process in my own house, and what I wanted to do, I couldn't do, because I was told that building regulations would not pass it because of the lack of natural light coming into, for example, I think bedrooms and living rooms must have natural light or access. You look at that, I mean, that building, so that, that whole flat is going to be sealed on three sides, and the only natural light is going to be the natural light that comes in from the courtyard, if I've read, I'm not an architect, so sometimes...
No, you're right.
Excuse me. But I, I don't think anybody should be living, apart from the arguments that have already been said, which are valid, hugely valid. I don't think we should be, as Peter Campbell would say, these are the slums of tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, so, I think we just need to propose that we object to this.
Have to have reasons, though, don't you?
Is the access at the back, is the access at the back?
Down the side.
But it's, where are the windows? I can't see any windows.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
Where is there any natural daylight coming in from windows or, or front doors, back doors?
It's not.
There's not.
It's not.
So, that would be, I think we need to put that down as a major issue.
So, I, from what I gain from you members is that we should refuse this on, on the grounds of, one is the loss of retail space, and two is that the size of the unit is inappropriate, especially with regard to there being no windows on both side elevations and only a partial light coming in at the rear.
Second round, yeah.
Okay with that? Everybody in favour of that? Thank you, that's carried then.
Suitable for holes, though, won't it?
Yeah, I do.
It's like unbelievable, it's good.
And the next one, gentlemen, please.
The next one is 17 High Street, St Lawrence, change of use of a disused public house to a one-bedroom flat, a four-bedroom HMO and five-bedroom HMO.
Hey, jeez.
Called in by Councillor Mackinson, a concern about HMO, but Dean cannot obviously show you exactly what this is.
The wing chief asked it yesterday. This is what is existing. So, that's ground floor. And upper floor, so this is it, as existing, which was not a...
Yeah.
So, shows up, and this is what they proposed to, so you've got a communal area, you've got a single bedroom, one, two, three, four, five, six there, you've got a shower on the base and fire cracks at the back.
So, they're all, they're all shared, it's all sharing?
Sharing, yeah, and then...
Totally unacceptable.
It's that one, you're going to provide Seeborn, isn't it?
Yeah. So, it's just this first floor. And then you've got bedroom, a few bathrooms at the top, where there's a shower and a bathroom, and then you've got a kitchen shed, dining and living area, and three bedrooms and a...
We need to call that in. Councillor Nixey?
I think that, that's probably an obvious amendment that you'd like to fix, because it's on the ground of the HMOs, and we conceived letting uses for buildings and so on and so forth. But I also would like to remind ourselves, this is on the corner of the most polluted part of Thannet, just means that this is the St Lawrence Roundabout. We are trying to, you know, it's really, really up to our planning targets in terms of climate change, okay? So, I think we need to, you know, think about the climate impact, which is, you know, very, and what that will do to it, as, not that we can do this with an HMO, but I just like to point that out to you.
I think it's total overdevelopment of the site. Also, it's not been empty that long. I think it's been empty about...
Because actually, it's still an entrance on the door that says to close to refuel the ship.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, so they would have to show that the building to be used as a public house is, is never going to be used again, effectively. So, while some, somebody, the last person in there might not have been able to make the business work, but someone else might be able to make the business work. But certainly that, in relation to this application, it's overdevelopment and I just think it's totally inappropriate.
It's right on the road.
At, it's at the location, totally inappropriate.
Opposite the church?
Yes.
That was sounds over the line.
You were a pair.
That's the one.
That's the one, yeah. Councillor Wynn?
There doesn't seem to be any space again for rubbish, which is our eternal problem. I mean, parking, and I, you know, I'm a green councillor, so I don't want people in cars, I have a car myself, because we need them. I think to keep quoting the sustainability, which is what Thannet District Council does, is not appropriate. If you look at our employment levels, people live in Thannet and most of them have to leave Thannet to work. So, I, I think we've, we've got to start fighting against that sustainability issue.
In news, is that in, is that in, that's, that's in...
I don't know.
It's in Newington, I checked it.
It definitely didn't come.
It is Newington Ward, is it? So, it's on, it's right on the last knockings of Newington Ward.
Yeah, this never came.
So, I checked, it's 17 St Lawrence Street, I checked it on my neighbour.
We never got this, you know, you get a document of, this never came to us.
But I, I would suggest that maybe we get the news and all councillors to call it in.
We've got Rick, Rick, councillor over at...
And TDC one, Rick is the TDC all catch.
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't have been alerted, Jane.
Yeah, we can cut, I mean, I'll call it in if you like.
Yeah, there is Treveshunk as well.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy to call it in. Just the Britain stuff, yeah.
I think if it gets called in, then a number of us can speak.
I'm going to reference that one, definitely.
Yeah, I might, I might understand, because if they're called in, anybody can go and speak, can't they?
Yes.
So, we could, Jane could go and speak.
It would be restricted in the amount of people who would, because obviously the time.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's only like one, four and one against, so...
I mean, Rick, sir, you can call it in.
Well, I'll call it in, I'll call, I'll call the, the application in and... Yeah, I'll call that in. Up to you, proposal? Proposal for refusal?
Happy to propose over development.
Yeah.
And, um. Extremely conscious of, of, of where it is in regulation.
And your point, no clear evidence of non-viability as a pub.
Of the buy business, yeah.
Good phraseology, like that.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so would be the loss of an amen, it'd be loss of an amenity asset. But why is an amenity as a pub, Tony, you know that, better than anybody. Okay, so.
So it's the only pub in Newton.
The only pub in Newton.
Yeah, indeed. Now that's seconded, proposed, seconded, all in favour? Thank you, that's carried, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, I thought we had another one, oh, no, that's it then, so. Uh, date and time of the next meeting is, uh, Wednesday the ninth of February.
It, it came to.
Ladies and gentlemen, I need to take that, and. And, um, I thank you very much for your attendance, and thank you, members of public who have been watching.
Dan, dog wanted to say hello.